That's a good spot.
You look very colorful today.
Thank you. Too bright? I know, we look like the neon people, all of us, the three of us. It didn't look this bright in my room, you know? No, it was just pink, like fuchsia, but it kind of looks kind of neonish. Here I wasn't trying to be fluorescent or anything, you know? Are you gonna, are you gonna ask during public comments to talk about it? Do you want to wait till then? Okay.
I just wondered if, you know, if you would like to.
Well, we'll see if I can make that. Thank you.
Hey, there. Down to see, we're gonna have probably a private for funeral buzz.
Yeah.
From what we've gathered, so I come down, I don't know if you want me to ask for a paper.
Well, of course, I recommend, I can't do that from here, though. I can't do it from, you know, my, it's a, that's a political statement I can't make.
I didn't know.
Yeah, I think you asked me.
Oh, I, I sure can, but not, just not.
Okay, sure.
Well, I don't know if I can ask for the board's recommendation. I would ask each commissioner if they choose to support you, you know what I mean?
Or our trust.
Ma, you can't tell someone to ask each commissioner privately for something. That's, you're literally getting in court right now over that. You should know that you can't do that.
He's asking for your support in a, okay, then don't call any commissioner. Don't call any commissioner.
Yeah, because I know what I'm talking about. And thank you. It'd be better for you to say something up there to all of us. Don't talk to us individually to ask for something that you want all of us to do, because then it's a violation of sunshine law. And if you're, if you're setting out to be a trustee, I, I would think you should know that.
Okay. And I did invite you to a party.
Okay. It's 10:31, so is, is he here? Not here?
I don't think he's here.
Okay, well, then.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Then we can start, if you could stand, we can start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone here who would like to lead us in prayer? If you want to lead in prayer? If you'd like to lead in prayer? Thank you.
Father God, we just want to thank you for this gathering today. We thank you, Father God, that your presence and your beloved son of whom you were well pleased, Jesus and the Holy Spirit, will be present during this meeting, Lord God. We thank you for those that are represented here. We thank you for the families that are represented here today, Father God. We thank you for the blood of Jesus that covers us all, regardless of what our political party is, what our religious doctrine is, and who we are as a people. So we thank you that this will be a peaceful meeting today, Lord God. And we ask these things in the name of Jesus. Amen and amen.
Thank you. It's written that we're going to have the next public workshop next Tuesday at August 6th, but there's a scheduling conflict because there's a contempt hearing for the open meetings case, a full evidentiary hearing at 10 o'clock on that date, at 10 o'clock. So I don't know if you want to change the time to the afternoon.
That's for the meeting or the workshop?
For the workshop. And in order to change a time or place or date, you have to do it from a, a public meeting. So if you would like to do that.
I, I'm not even sure the contempt, that doesn't affect me in any way.
But there would have to be two people to have a meeting.
I'll continue to have the workshop on my own, then.
But that's not a, it's not a public workshop.
It will still be made public. We've done it before.
I, I would like to ask that we make it later in the afternoon, because I wouldn't even be able to attend virtually myself either. And I think that having most.
You, you don't attend the workshops.
I attend them virtually, so I call in and I wouldn't be able to do that. So I'm proposing that we do this in the afternoon, maybe 2 o'clock. And I'd like to make a motion to change the workshop time from 10:30 a.m. to 2:30, I'd say 2:30 p.m., just to be safe because of the hearing.
I have no reason to change it. I can be here at 10:30, and the public is welcome.
Not a public meeting, then?
And as is the press.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's not a public meeting, then, and that's a shame. So then the next regular meeting is Wednesday, August 7th. So we can get started.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated July 23rd, 2024, and the regular meeting dated July 24th, 2024, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No. Because they're not done correctly.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number three is to transfer monies.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number four is to approve transfer of appropriations.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number five is to adopt the alternative tax budget of Trumbull County, Ohio, for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2025, authorizing Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to sign the alternative tax budget and submit the same to the Trumbull County Budget Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second, only for purposes of discussion, I don't feel comfortable adopting something with a deficit and that we only received just recently and didn't have an opportunity to review in more detail. So that's where I'm at with it right now.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No.
Item number six is to adopt the updated Trumbull County Capital Asset Policy dated 7/31/24 as submitted by the Trumbull County Auditor's Office.
A motion to approve.
Second, for purposes of discussion, I tried to discuss this yesterday. The, it doesn't indicate who is going to be administering that policy. I, I believe that was absent. There were just some, we just, again, it's something that we just received that we didn't participate in, and it was just placed in front of us to, to vote on. And I think that we should participate or at least have an opportunity to review it and give feedback. It's my opinion.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Not at this time.
Item number seven is to adopt a resolution determining to proceed with the submission to the electors the question of levying a replacement tax in excess of 10 mil limitation for the purpose of providing or maintaining senior citizen services or facilities that the county auditor estimates will collect 3,627,000 annually at an annual tax rate of .75 mils for each $1 of taxable value, which is the same rate as the existing levy and which amounts to $26 for each 100,000 of the county auditor's appraised value for a five-year, for a period of five years commencing in 2025, first due in calendar year 2026, if approved by a majority of the electors voting thereon. Said levy shall be submitted to the electors in the general election to be held on November 5th, 2024, and to direct the clerk of this board to certify a copy of said resolution and certificate of the county auditor to the Board of Elections on or before 4 p.m., August 7th, 2024, and notify said Board of Elections to cause notice on the questions of levying said tax to be given as required by law.
A motion to approve.
Second, for purpose of discussion, I, I said before, Ma, yesterday, and I think that maybe without Jenny here, you'd be able to hopefully process this. Every other levy that we have that's a renewal includes if this has their own facility. The senior services, they don't have a facility, and that, that really needs to be taken out. And I want to see if you would agree.
But you were on the call yesterday where the county prosecutor who's here today.
No, it was, hang on a second.
Okay, well, then he, he actually, he actually explained that its facility is the term that should be used.
Okay, well, I wasn't able to hear that discussion because I heard, last I heard Martha Yoder saying, turn off the, the auditor saying, turn off the phone.
After you swore at Danny.
That's fine. It's a, it's a free country, and I was, I'm a member, I was a member of the general public. So at any rate, I was disconnected and ejected from a public meeting. So, so you know, after that happened, I didn't hear his explanation. So I guess you could just call the roll. And also, what, what, what did you say? It's, so the public is aware, it is the same, it is the same rate, but it is a higher, but it's going to increase their property taxes because it's going to be based on their new appraised value. And I think that the comment made yesterday was misleading to say that some peoples will go down. Well, obviously, they didn't request to do it as a replacement as opposed to a renewal because they thought they were going to lose. It's because they know that they're going to have more revenue. And I think that people should know that this does equate to an increase. I just wanted to say that.
But the people have the ability to vote yes or no on it.
Right, but no one, no, it's, it's just unfortunate that only people who are in government understand the terminology and such, because it seems misleading to the voters to say which is the same rate. So go ahead and call the roll.
Well, it's putting on the exact amount on here.
Okay.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No.
Sure, thank you, Bill. Our prosecutor, Bill Danza.
I just want to remind the board that the deadline to have this all done to the Board of Elections, I believe, is 4 p.m. on August 7th. If there is not a majority vote for approval before then, it cannot go on the ballot. It can, the paperwork can't be submitted, and that, that will offend, effectively short-circuit the attempt to put any of these levies back on the ballot. So I just want to warn you guys of that. You know, obviously, your call to do and vote how you see fit, but I just wanted to be clear.
With all the ones that are renewals, 100% comfortable. It's just this one, I said that I would only support a renewal, and they changed it. And I, I understand that you must have said something about the facility. My concern about having the facility as a language is that they would try to justify using, at some point, senior levy funds for something that's not okay because the levy language states it. Do you see what I mean?
And I, I don't want to disrupt your meeting, but I can give the explanation again if the board would like me to. It's up to you guys.
I wish I wasn't ejected from a meeting, and I would hope that you can give what your knowledge is, because when I give my knowledge, I get dismissed. But we don't dismiss or cut off people from public meetings. That is grounds for lawsuits, and we already have the open meetings and open records nonprofit in the county that I joined them on a lawsuit with. And I think that we need to make sure that everyone, every elected official, including the auditor, who knows, because they're the people who manage that system, that no one can be ejected from you.
I'm up here to talk about the levy.
Well, I hope that she'll give some, some feedback to that, too.
Well, I, I will quickly. First of all, the, the first thing to understand for anyone voting for this levy is that as a replacement levy, much like a renewal, it has the same purpose that was approved by the commissioner, I'm sorry, approved by the commissioners and the public in the first additional levy when this was put on in the, in the 90s, I want to say. So what happens is that language comes directly from the statute that authorizes the county to have a senior levy.
I wasn't given the history, I wasn't given anything except for this, and that's the problem I've been having.
Well, that's because this is a, this is a replacement and a renewal levy.
Right.
That is, that's the way it works, because it only goes off of what was done in the past, which you guys would also have record of here. So what I'm.
So what, what, what happened in the past relates to what's going on currently. That's before I was a commissioner. When something comes to the agenda, we should be given all of the background, the previous language and all of that, because this is, as you just stated, what it is. But we don't receive that because staff just gives the, the language.
Right, and, and traditionally, that's never happened, because it's a renewal and a replacement. It, it has to be the same as the ones that came before it. There, there isn't, there isn't really discretion to change the renewal or replacement, replacement levy.
I mean, our job is.
That's up to you, you could certainly.
Our job as commissioners is to make sure that what we're looking at is correct. We compare, I compare things to last contracts and.
Sure, and you also have, you also have your clerk, you also have legal counsel that helps prepare all these. So there's, there are checks and balances along the way, as well as, like I said yesterday, not only is it through the county, but then the Board of Elections also has a review of the, of the materials, and the Secretary of State ultimately approves the ballot language in accordance with the resolution. So.
We should see it, too.
So just to be clear, that's why that, that, one of the reasons that word is in there is that is the direct statutory language for senior levy. The other thing to keep in mind is that the word facilities doesn't necessarily mean build a new building. When you see the word facilities, I don't believe that that's defined in the statute. The rule of statutory construction is if the word isn't defined in the statute, it gets its ordinary meaning. So when you look up the definition ordinarily of facilities, it includes certainly buildings, improvements to buildings. It also includes equipment, it includes physical items. When you see services and facilities, not only are you permitted to use it on senior services, you're permitted to, permitted to use it to fund the office of senior services also, which I believe you guys have done for many years. So that, that word doesn't mean you're going to go build a new building. It authorizes that kind of thing.
I'm talking about someone being able to, you, the way this is written, where the senior center is, they could use that for improvements there if they wanted, and that has, and we don't do that.
Sure, if, if the commissioners approve that use of the money.
Trust this board, I'd rather.
Well, yeah, that's just an explanation legally of why that language is there.
Okay. Why, again, the only thing that I received is what is on the agenda.
Sure.
And I like to be able to look back at things that, especially at things that I have questions about.
Okay, and again, you know, you, you're welcome to, to get copies of that. I mean, it's, this levy's gone on for many years, there's a number of documents out there.
I know, I'm welcome to get copies of it, but I'm really not, because I have staff here that doesn't send me things that I request or, so that's the trouble.
Let's move on, please.
Item number eight is to adopt a resolution determining to proceed with the submission to the electors the question of levying a renewal tax. Yes, I called the roll. In excess of the 10 mil limitation for the purpose of providing for the necessary requirements of the Trumbull County Board of Developmental Disabilities for the operation of programs and services by said board, including the Fairhaven Programs, and for the acquisition, construction, renovation, financing, maintenance, and operation of mental retardation and developmental disability facilities that the county auditor estimates will collect 7,771,000 annually at an annual tax rate of 2.25 mils for each $1 of taxable value, which is the same rate as the existing levy and which amounts to an estimated effective rate of $52 for each 100,000 of the county auditor's appraised value for a period of 10 years commencing in 2025, first due in calendar year of 2026, if approved by a majority of the electors voting thereon. Said levy shall be submitted to the electors in the general election to be held on November 5th, 2024, and to direct the clerk of this board to certify a copy of said resolution and certificate of the county auditor to the Board of Elections on or before 4 p.m., August 7th, 2024, and notify said Board of Elections to cause notice on the questions of levying said tax to be given as required by law.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number nine is to adopt a resolution determining to proceed with the submission to the electors the question of levying a renewal tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation for the purpose of the support of children's services and the care and placement of children in Trumbull County, Ohio, for use by the Trumbull County Children's Services Board that the county auditor estimates will collect 2,763,000 annually at an annual tax rate of .8 mils for each $1 of taxable value, which is the same rate as the existing levy and which amounts to an estimated effective rate of $19 for each $100,000 of the county auditor's appraised value for a period of 10 years commencing in 2025, first due in calendar year 2026, if approved by a majority of the electors voting thereon. Said levy shall be submitted to the electors in the general election to be held on November 5th, 2024, and to direct the clerk of this board to certify a copy of said resolution and certificate of the county auditor to the Board of Elections on or before 4 p.m., August 7th, 2024, and notify said Board of Elections to cause notice on the questions of levying said tax to be given as required by law.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 10 is to adopt a resolution determining to proceed with the submission to the electors the question of levying a renewal tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation for the purpose of the operation of alcohol and drug addiction programs and mental health programs for use by the Trumbull County Mental Health and Recovery Board that the county auditor estimates will collect 3,454,000 annually at an annual tax rate of $1 million for each $1 of taxable value, which is the same rate as the existing levy and which amounts to an estimated effective rate of $23 for each 100,000 of the county auditor's appraised value for a period of 10 years commencing in 2025, first due in calendar year 2026, if approved by a majority of the electors voting thereon. Said levy shall be submitted to the electors in the general election to be held on November 5th, 2024, and to direct the clerk of this board to certify a copy of said resolution and certificate of the county auditor to the Board of Elections on or before 4 p.m., August 7th, 2024, and notify said Board of Elections to cause notice on the questions of levying said tax to be given as required by law.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes, and I wanted to make a comment, because I know that there was someone who had a question about the terminology used in the developmental disability language. And the reason we use the language, even though some terminology has changed, that's acceptable to describe that population is because that's the original language that was used when the levy was adopted, and that's what Bill Danza just, just explained.
Item number 11 is to receive and place on file the monthly activities report for the Trumbull County Dog Kennel for the month of June 2024.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 12 is concur with the Trumbull County Engineer.
Can you ask them to turn that up in the back? Because this is dropping 55-degree air, and my hands are getting them, and I have to have it directed this way. I'm sorry.
You have to have it directed towards me?
Towards my hands, I'm sorry, I can't move my.
Can you move it this way?
No, because I'm right-handed, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
As soon as my numb fingers warm up, I don't know.
Okay, we're on item number 12, to concur with the Trumbull County Engineer to close the following roadway as listed, and that's Girdle Road in Farmington Township between Old State Road and Ensign Road, and for bridge replacement, closing date Monday, July 29th, 2024, through Friday, August 23rd, 2024.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yeah.
Item 13 is to concur with the County Engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permits for fleet vehicles requested by the companies listed. And those companies are Cindy Crump, Enderly &amp; Sons, Horadiski Brothers &amp; Company, and Porin Shacks Trucking LLC.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 14 is to concur with the Trumbull County Engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the company listed. And these are four separate permits by Custom Cable Construction, Doing Businesses Custom, Utilicom, Inc.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item 15 is to authorize the Board of Commissioners clerk to advertise for sealed bids for the Township Highway 185C Bushnell Campbell Resurfacing Project. The project includes the resurfacing of Bushnell Campbell Road in Vernon Township between State Route 88 and State Route 5. This project is being funded from the county's ARPA funds in accordance with the road repair agreement between the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners, the Trumbull County Engineer, and Vernon Township.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item 16 is to approve the retirement and present a resolution to Mr. Alan Prox from his position of dispatcher with Trumbull County 911. Mr. Prox will be retiring effective August 1st, 2024, with 30 years of service. Mr. Prox will be retiring effective August first, twenty twenty four, with thirty years of service to Trumbull County. The Board of Commissioners and staff would like to pay a fond farewell to Alan and wish him many years of happiness, good health, and relaxation for which he is most deserving.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number seventeen is to approve the personnel action for the employment of Ms. Mimosa Long to the position of custodian at pay range three, zero years, fourteen forty five per hour with the Maintenance Department effective Monday, August fifth, twenty twenty four.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
I am going to abstain because I have not received enough information to make this decision. I ask for um rankings and more information about um the the application process. And alls I got was a little small sheet, which is inadequate for me to make that decision, so I'm going to abstain.
Item eighteen is to approve the personnel action for the employment of Mr. Larry Keller to the full-time position of telecommunicator in the Trumbull County nine one one department, earning seventeen point four eight eight per hour effective Monday, August fifth, twenty twenty four.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item nineteen is to authorize Mauro Cantala Mesa, Trumbull County Commissioner, to execute the subdivision and participation and release form and any other required documents on behalf of Trumbull County as a governmental entity to allow Trumbull County to participate in the Kroger Settlement Agreement dated March twenty second, twenty twenty four regarding the county's claims pending in N R A National Prescription Opioid Opiate Litigation M D L number two eight zero four.
A motion to approve.
Uh. Second, and I'd like to have some discussion. I don't seem to have a thought I finished.
Yes, I do have it.
Um. This these lawsuits and the things that we're involved in for the opioid are very important, and they help the county address a a huge problem. And they help our population that's uh at risk and in need for services. We have historically had Jim Misaki uh when I started as the person who's the contact person for uh all of that litigation. He's no longer one of our employees, yet we're voting on things that are being sent directly to him. Uh. Directly to him without us being in the loop. We were very close to not being able to participate in this because it was sent on July fifth. And there was, it was ignored. No one responded. Then on July twenty third, uh we got another notice uh as a reminder. And that, and so if we're going to have that's why, that's one reason I want to make a case for having a county administrator. And the other case I'm trying to make is that we shouldn't have someone in another under another elected official's office doing work that relates to the commissioners. And I don't know if you saw that.
Well.
But we were damn close to not being able, you know, July fifth, this was completely ignored.
Did you, did you make a phone call to anybody on July fifth?
We didn't receive this email. What I'm saying is we have it designated. Okay. I don't see it. I'm sorry then. This email the thread on that does not have it. So if it is, then I missed it, but everything else has a thread.
Nothing's been missed, Commissioner.
I'm telling, well, okay, what we received whenever we.
And as far as Jim Misaki working for the auditor's office, the state auditor has looked at that position and found nothing wrong with him doing to to cross cross uh um you know, duties into our department, especially when he started on this opioid litigation.
This is.
That's according to the state auditor, which you called on him to try to get him in trouble, but
Okay, well.
Fortunately, he saw otherwise.
What happened? If we want to be completely clear and open and you wanted to say what you said, I'm gonna say what I'm saying.
Okay.
So he he would facilitate weekly meetings contrary to sunshine in the office in the morning with you and Frank before the meeting started.
Not true.
Before every meeting, and I have videos of it, and you're getting sued for it. Secondly,
It's not true.
Um, I, he was getting he was getting paid for working forty hours a week and wasn't or a certain number of hours and wasn't working it. And Dawn, when I asked her about it, told me that, told me that. And when I confronted him, um, when I confronted him about not working this many hours as he was getting paid for, he said, well, I'm available. And that is, that is an absolute quote from him. And then I started to pay extra attention to him because he was not, he was not here. He was not answering his door. And once people had to start clocking in because he wasn't here or showing up, he went and got taken over to be hid, in my opinion, by um
Thank you for saying.
Auditor, by auditor um Viviano, just took, just didn't advertise for a job, just kind of took him over to hide him. And then Frank Puda told me that something. I'm just gonna repeat Frank. He said that he needed insurance. That's why they keep him. So I mean, this whole, if that's what's going on, I really don't know what's going on.
Mission.
I just don't think.
Mr. Misaki is.
Think that we should have employees at the county getting paid so much money to uh to almost miss these things. And if he is the person responsible for this, he should have responded um prior immediately thereafter. If you have an opportunity to be included in a lawsuit and you get an email on July fifth, and that's your duty.
Mission.
It is because I have no say so on it.
Okay.
Then he should, then he should have responded. We almost missed it. And I just want to say that in the future, we should have someone in our, in our office responsible for that so that they're reaching out directly to either commissioner or administrator or somebody who we know will get back with them because it's too big of a risk.
And just so the public knows, Mr. Misaki is directly responsible for the millions and millions of dollars coming into this county because of this opioid litigation.
Totally not responsible.
So please stop.
If you want to give.
And not just this case, not the one Ohio case, but the case with Lake County, the Bellwether case.
Right, that would be.
That you had nothing to do with, that we were in federal court.
Okay.
So please stop.
That would be April Caraway, as far as I'm concerned.
You never went to federal court one time.
Did you?
Yes, many times.
Be- before, oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, so for.
Let's call the law.
For item eighteen.
Um, this is, this is a windfall for the county and you're making it into something negative.
What I'm saying is that we should make sure that we're on top of, that whoever is responsible, if you guys want to assign someone that's outside of the commissioners, then then there should be a requirement that they respond right within three days or something like that. If it relates to the opioid litigation, then we need to make sure that they're on the ball responding.
We have received every settlement, millions of dollars, Commissioner, has benefited Trumbull County because of this employee.
Email directly to him on July fifth and then on July twenty third.
It's.
Um, okay, we, I'm just saying, we, we barely.
The positive there.
I know it's good, but it was a close call and I just.
It wasn't a close call.
Hopefully me, me saying that will cause them to be a bit more responsive so that we don't wait until, you know, the eleventh hour.
Okay, so for item nineteen, uh Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number twenty is to authorize change order number four for a thirty day no cost time extension for the contract with M J D Excavating, Inc. For the Heat and Shoot Sanitary Sewer Household Connections Project, Weathersfield Township, funded through the P Y twenty twenty two Community Development Block Grant, Residential Public Infrastructure Grant, and the American Rescue Plan Act, and to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to sign any related documents.
Motion to approve.
Second, is Gary here? Well, I have a question about the email. That didn't I just got an email from you this morning. This does not relate to the, to that or any of the.
Your name, Gary.
I'm sorry, was what you were requesting today on that email going to go on our agenda today?
Are you talking about the crane drive and the L P W C grant?
It said something about an agreement and yeah, that's the email that I got, I believe, this morning.
Yes, I discussed it at the workshop with the commissioner yesterday that on our Crane Drive Sewer Project that we wanted to send back the seven hundred fifty thousand dollar grant that we got last year, put it back into the district and then reapply this year for additional funds to make up a funding shortfall. And they agreed to it. And so I copied you on that email that I sent to uh the state with that request.
Okay, so who agreed to it?
Uh, we had Commissioner Cantala Mesa and uh uh Commissioner Malloy yesterday.
So the state didn't agree to it? You're just requesting it?
Would that, I called Ed Davis, who is the representative at Eastgate, asking what is my procedure here in order to have that money put back into the district? He told me to uh email to Ashley uh Ellsworth, which I did, and that's the one I copied you on, requesting that, requesting that those funds be returned to the district.
Why are you sending them back?
Because we need more money for that project.
I thought it was all planned out already, and that's why it was applied for, because something you like.
All right, when, when we did the original application, the cost estimate was two million dollars due to inflation and uh other factors that that caused our project increase to three million dollars. And only having seven hundred fifty thousand of O P W C grant is not enough to uh bring the capital charge down to an affordable level for the residents.
So what's the gap?
Uh, about uh a million dollars. It was two million, now it's three million. So then I'm trying to get back seven hundred fifty thousand, make up that gap with seven hundred fifty thousand by changing our request this year from a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar O P W C grant to a hundred, to a one point five million dollar O P W C grant.
The plan is to make these as affordable as we can to the users.
Yes.
Steve, do you think that would be by whoever it is, the, the O P W C or that you requested? Like, are.
Well, they'll score to the project this year. If I, my normal allocation down there is seven hundred fifty thousand per year.
Right.
I usually put in a project for seven hundred fifty thousand. If I returned the last year's seven hundred fifty thousand and go for one point five million this year, I'm still getting what I consider Trumbull County's share of the pot.
There's no risk that they could say no or anything like that, because I'm.
There's always the risk, I, but, but there's no way we can build a project with only a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar grant. If we don't get to one point five million, we're, uh, I'm not sure what we're gonna do. We may have to shell the project.
About, um, someone was asking about and the second, is the second phase of Meadowbrook Pendleton?
Yes.
So how's that going? Because someone was asking me about that, too.
The P T I application is in, drawings are approved.
Okay.
And they're down there. We're hoping to have that P T I approved before the nomin, before the nomination has become due sometime in the beginning of September. So uh, I'm sort of.
That's when they're gonna make that decision.
Once you, once I send the nominations in, then a decision will come on whether or not we get to four million dollars of principal forgiveness for Pendleton Gilmer. Okay?
Thank you for explaining that. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, so for item twenty, I'll take the vote.
And we don't need to take any journal action on that, do we?
No.
To change it? Okay, that's, thank you. I just wanted to make sure of that, too.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Frenchco?
Yes.
Item twenty one is to authorize change order number four for a thirty day no cost extension for the contract with Express Underground for the Heat and Shoot Sanitary Sewer Household Connections Project, Weathersfield Township, funded through the P Y twenty twenty two Community Development Block Grant Residential Public Infrastructure Grant Program and the American Rescue Plan Act, and to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign any related documents.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item twenty two is to accept maintenance bond number six, six, four, two, five, five, eight, eight, issued by Auto Owners Mutual Insurance Company for the P Y twenty twenty three H S T S Reserve Program for three home sewage treatment systems installed by Proscape Septic and Landscape Contractors. Pro- Proscape Septic and Landscape Contractors completed the in installation of three home sewage treatment systems in Bloomfield, Braceville, and Johnston Townships, funded through the P Y twenty twenty three H S T S program. The work has been approved by the Trumbull County Combined Health District and Trumbull County Building Department. The maintenance bond is in the amount of twenty percent, nine thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars of the final project cost, forty nine thousand, eight hundred dollars, and is valid for a period of two years as required by the contract documents commencing June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four and ending June twenty fifth, twenty twenty six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yeah. Yes.
Item twenty three is to amend agenda item number twelve, July twelfth, twenty twenty four, Commissioner's Regular Meeting to authorize the advertisement of a public notice in a newspaper of general circulation published in the Tribune Chronicle on July twenty second, twenty twenty four, announcing the timeframe for and location of the request for price proposal packages for the P Y twenty four Community Development Block Grant Critical Infrastructure Grant Program revolving loan fund Townsend Avenue Storm Drainage Infrastructure Improvements Project. And the amendment is necessary to correct the fund number to two, two, five, zero, three, zero, five, one, two, three, five, one, zero, four, dash, one, dash, five, zero, five, five, zero, one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item twenty four is to approve the detailed drawings for the Sheridan Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, known as County Project Number five dash S dash twenty three in the Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item twenty five is to authorize Gary Newbrow, P E, sanitary engineer, to issue the notice to proceed to United Earthworks, Inc. for construction of Contract A of the State Road Water Regionalization Project, known as County Project Number two dash W dash twenty three in Champion and Southington Townships.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item twenty six is to authorize Gary E. Newbrow, P E, sanitary engineer, to issue the notice to proceed to Utility Contracting, Inc. for construction of Contract B of the State Road Water Regionalization Project, known as County Project Number two dash W dash twenty three in Champion and Southington Townships.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item twenty seven is to um authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act Funds, ARPA, Mrs. Optimist Club Foundation of Bezetta Dash Cortland. And Commissioners, if you'd look down below, item one, the county seeks to amend the grant agreement approved by way of the July third, twenty twenty four Resolution Agenda Item Number thirty. The grant agreements is amended exclusive to reflect that the name of the recipient is the Optimist Club Foundation of Bezetta Court Dash Cortland.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Okay, item twenty eight is to approve contract number four oh four dash twenty three dash two ten between the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services and Job Works, Inc., Doing Businesses, Job Works Education and Training Systems in an amount not to, not to exceed four hundred forty one thousand, eight hundred twenty dollars to be paid from temporary assistance to needy families, comprehensive case management and employment. To be paid from Temporary Assistance to Needy Families Comprehensive Case Management and Employment Program Funds. And the agreement will be effective for the term June tenth, two thousand twenty-four through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, and then I want to have some discussion about this. You got your email? Input.
This was discussed at work session yesterday.
So the email from Bill Danzo today or yesterday?
This was discussed at the workshop session yesterday.
Okay, so I'm talking about as it relates to the emails that Bill Danzo sent this week.
I didn't see it this morning, no.
So my one thing that wasn't. That when I, I know it was discussed, but the reality is the Commissioners didn't receive anything about this item yet again. And and I don't know why I'm the only person who wants to see everything. And it should come to us because as a standard and a policy. Uh, that they adopted, everything that comes on our agenda has to come with a supporting documentation. However, it wasn't there yesterday, so none of the Commissioners were explained anything and it should, you know. If we're going to give the clerk the ability to gatekeep our agenda. We need to make sure that nothing is added unless there's supporting documentation. Because then whenever we get it, like you're just receiving something last night or this morning, it doesn't give us adequate time to. Digest or review or ask additional questions. So with this item. I I was concerned once I started reviewing things because I saw that the employee there. Sent out an invite, it says it's a courtesy announcement. Um, from Jobs and Family Services for the request for the bid. For the purpose of soliciting bids from interesting parties. Whenever you see something like that, that automatically should raise red flags and it did for me. And I I immediately wanted to make sure that a proper process was followed to make sure that there is a. A vendor list, a qualified vendor list and what the process was for doing that. Um, vendor notification list, to be exact. And when I, uh, looked further at that, I realized. That the list that they are calling a vendor list is is simply stated at the top of it is. Record of requests to receive the RFP for the next fiscal year. So that is completely different than a vendor's list, just a list of people who called up or sent an email and said, hey, make sure that the one that bid. Bid time is up, uh, that you send me a request for it. A a vendor list is something that's completely different. And that's where you make sure that everyone's eligible who is on it so that you can. Make sure that no one's excluded because if someone's excluded, if someone's excluded and, um.
Thank you, Melissa.
So if, no, so if someone is excluded from that list that then wanted to be, wanted to bid, then you can have problems.
This is Melissa Benyon, I'm the fiscal officer at Job and Family Services. Um, we publicly announced the bid in the Tribune Chronicle, which was also attached. Um, we also placed that bid opportunity, the notification, the public notice and the bid documents. On the agency website. ODJFS has endorsed our process and in my tenure during. The twenty years that I've been in fiscal at Job and Family Services. Our procurement process has been reviewed multiple times between ODJFS and the state auditor and we've not had a problem. Uh, most recently in the state audit that we had, it was reviewed under the title twenty. So at this point, we haven't had any negative feedback about that. While I understand. Your concern with the use of a pre-qualified vendor list. Because JFS funding. The guidelines change depending on what funding source we're using to support the service that we're providing. We do individual bids that are publicly announced. The reason that that notification list is is kept. Is because when people call in, they want to be sure they're notified in case they miss what's in the paper.
That's where the error is. The only, everything that you've said that you've done is correct with the exception of contacting the bidders and asking them to bid. That's the thing that's a problem and there is an attorney general opinion that states specific guidelines for if you're going to do that. I wasn't aware that you were sending emails to vendors that were interested because technically. And just it's pre-award contact and that's forbidden. And so I know that there wasn't any ill intent, but at the same time. If there is going to be that contact, you have to make sure that it originated or stemmed from a proper. Maintaining of a proper vendor's list and I'm not the attorney. But I don't know if I explained that well enough or if you could, Mr. Danzo, was that about right?
Being.
Yeah, generally speaking, that is correct. So that Attorney General's opinion generated was generated by Trumbull County, I think in two thousand and five. Yeah, so the answer is that generally, and as I say, that pre-award contact is prohibited. And that generally is in the context of. Communicating with a bidder to give them unfair advantage in the process.
That gives an unfair advantage to say, hey, you guys were.
Well, whether or not, whether or not, whether or not there's a bidder's list that's used, that's a vendor notification list is used, that's that's a decision. The contracting authority can make. But there, that opinion does say there can be a vendor notification list. That is, they differentiate, if you read that closely, it differentiates between. Certain pre-award contact that gives an advantage to contact that simply alerts. A designated group of people or firms as people that are allowed to bid or or people that are interested in receiving notice the bid is available. And I, as I understand, that's what you guys are actually doing.
Yeah, there's no contact about like an unfair advantage of talking about anything, it's just notifying.
Uh, please understand that if you invite certain people to bid on something and there might be someone who didn't get that invitation via email directly. Then they might have a cause of action, which is the reason why.
Well, I think if you read that AG opinion, that that's not exactly what the Attorney General said. The Attorney General said that you can have the vendor notification list to make them aware of bidding opportunities if they're on this list that has defined criteria. It sounds like you guys define it by people that have had contracts with.
Yeah, what happens is our list is maintained annually. So any, I have, actually it's on a spreadsheet, I have a list for all new requests, it records the date they came in. The contact information, then anyone that we have done business with or has requested in the past five years. Once they've received, we have not received anything for five years, then we remove them from the list.
It's not, that's not a qualified.
So I would, so in other words, what you're saying isn't really correct. What what you're saying is that 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 is improper. And if you read the Attorney General's opinion. What it says is the the reason it's not improper is because you have a list that's maintained with. Specific criteria to be on the list.
It's not specific.
And and you also follow the requirements of the revised code as far as advertising, which is again, is what you said you guys also do.
Yes, but the generation of the list is what I have the concern with. If someone just calls and says, hey, send me the thing next, send me the request next time. That's not developing a list. I, we went through this back and forth when I was on Senior Lobby. And we had to make sure that if we were going to do that, just as they do for another, I think. Canitary does it. They have work to do to make sure that that list is inclusive. And not just people who request to be sent an invite. Do you see what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah, that's not what you said originally. Originally, you said that it couldn't be done and now you're saying that you just don't think the list is maintained, I guess. I just need to be clear.
I said if there is a, then if there's a proper qualified list.
Sure.
Then that's, that's fine.
So that would be a question.
Call the question, please.
No, I, you're, no, that there's a vote to call the question and I'm saying no because we're still in discussion. So, uh, as as far as this goes, just to, just to say, well, we, we maintain this and this is a proper. Vendor's list and all it is is people who have requested to receive those. I I don't. I don't think that it's proper because this is not.
Well, like I said, I don't, no, I, I don't.
It just says re- record of request to receive RFP.
Is that, is that the, that the list you guys use? Is that your vendor list? Okay.
It says record of those who requested to receive it. That's different. I, if I'm.
Well, all I, all I can say is what I said before is I I don't have, I just was alerted about this yesterday afternoon. I don't have enough information and I wouldn't give a formal legal opinion in the middle of a public meeting. All I'm saying is that I believe the majority of your questions are answered by that Attorney General's opinion, so.
And I, and I read it.
That's the starting point.
I read it this morning.
And if there's any additional questions the board has, you're welcome to to get a legal opinion, get additional legal information.
So I would like if 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 Mara would join me, can, would you please ask him? If you can answer if this qualifies as a proper vendor's list because the top of it just says request. Of rec- record of request to receive RFP.
There has been nothing wrong with our procurement policy at OJ, at at JFS. I don't think that that's necessary. There's been multiple entities that have looked at this before. They found nothing wrong with it, whether it be the Attorney General's Office or, um, the state auditor. I'm prepared to vote.
Well, I, as I said, I I read everything, I read it. I I just heard what Danzo said and he didn't answer this question. Because he he left it as, is this what we're using as, is this what she's using as the vendor's list? And it says that the contracting, the county contracting authority, which is the Board of Commissioners. Has the authority to develop a vendor notification list. And I, that's something I think we need to talk to the, um. Talk to Bill Danzo about as well because this was done by an agency, it's not a proper vendor's list. Anytime someone else does it, we actually, I think we even vote on that list. If I'm not mistaken, for for, um, I could be wrong. Eng- engineer Newbrow, don't we vote approve your vendor list?
It's a totally different department.
It, exact, oh my God, it's a, it's a different department, but it's still the Board of Commissioners. I'm reading. I'm sorry, I'm reading the Attorney General opinion. It says a Board of County Commissioners or other county contracting authority, which is. But that's us, we're the, we're the ones who contract on behalf of them. Uh, may develop a vendor notification list to publicize bidding opportunities. So that means that we, as a Board of Commissioners, would have to develop that list. And what she's saying is our vendor's list is. Is a record of request to receive an RFP. That's completely different. Than what the Attorney General opinion says.
That's your, your opinion and your interpretation of it.
So that's why I'm asking if you'll join me and asking a.
No, I interpret it completely differently.
As I've indicated, this is the, this is the procedure that we've used the entire time that I've been in the fiscal office. If there are questions about it, we're happy to review it with the county prosecutor's office.
We should be reviewing it with the county prosecutors.
Or whomever needs to do that.
To make sure that that he's included as well because I'm, I'm just, I understand he doesn't like to be against, um. Anyone, but this, you couldn't answer that. I mean, I would appreciate it if you could just like, look at this.
I think he answered it rather clearly, actually.
He said that it's okay to send the email and I'm not disputing that. What I'm disputing is if you send an email to not to qual- the qualified bidders or the vendor's list, that's where the problem is. And this isn't correct. Not, nothing on this says that this is a list that was prepared and approved by the Board of Commissioners or what the process was. To, uh, to identify the individual, individuals that the, uh, RFP was being. Or was being, um, sent to. And again, I'll read it just one more time. A Board of County Commissioners or other, uh, contracting authority may develop a vendor notification list to publicize bidding opportunities. And I'm questioning whether this qualifies as that because we had no, nothing to do with it. I had no idea that they were sending out invites. Please don't do that. Please don't send out invitations unless you know that it is a.
Again, I'm happy to get, get with the county prosecutor's office further and be sure that we're doing this.
But everything you've done with ODJFS.
Commissioners on it because we should be in the loop of this because we are the contracting authority. Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
But to this point, everything with JFS and everything with the state is clear. And by the way, John Gargano serves as our attorney as well over there. He's the attorney and the director, serves in both duties. So, John, can you explain that a little bit?
John Gargano. You've already heard this. I mean, I'm prepared to vote now.
Um, as Melissa has said, we have been using this for over twenty years. It's been reviewed, uh, it's, um, been reviewed by, uh, the monitors and, uh, the state. We've had no issues with it. It's a matter of, what's that?
Are they coming soon? Because I want to bring this up to them.
They were just here.
They were just here.
I I wonder if they actually saw the emails were going out and the process to develop this list. I'm responsible, provide all of that to them.
And there's been no issues. Um, the pass, it has been sent to also the prosecutor's office. Uh, the contract is a template, alls it is.
You approved this?
Alls it is is a change.
You approved this and I missed that?
No, the, the, the list has not been sent to him. But the contracts and things like that in the past, uh, it's a template contract agreement. The only things that are changed are the, the dates and and the amount of monies that are going to be distributed. We have had no issues, uh, we have reviewed it. Now, I haven't seen that Attorney General's opinion, I I will say that.
Attorney? You're the attorney there and you were paying him extra to be the.
I did not see that Attorney General's opinion, I said.
Okay, it was in two thousand and I believe four or five, you've been here.
If I have no issue with it, then why would I go look at it?
Okay.
Let's call the vote, please. Thank you both.
Say that what we've done for a period, a long period of time was, um, there was a process for hiring that include looking into. Um, files of people who have had, uh, public assistance to make sure that there wasn't any. Overpayments and if they owed anything, they were disqualifying them from hiring and you said that was okay too. And 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 you make the applicant sign off to not now, to allow them to look in their case files and that is so discriminatory. Because it has a disparate impact on a certain population. So, sir, I don't really like what you do or trust what you say.
And I don't trust what you say either, but if you remember, you reported that to the state of Ohio, which I had to deal with. And they found no issues with it.
Thank you, John.
Okay, so for item twenty-eight, Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Um, because of the concerns that I have about making sure that the, the, the qualified, um, I'm sorry, I'll call it the. Vendor notification list was done correctly. Uh, and that they only gave us a record of request, which is not the same. No.
Commissioners, um, Mr. Fox's family is here to accept this resolution. If you'd like to.
Um, we still have another signature here.
But you could go ahead and read it since they're here.
Thank you for being patient with us.
I didn't know we were doing this, or I would have done it first so that you didn't have to say that one. So is this a, on our agenda?
Yes.
We voted on it already.
Sixteen. Approved, okay, so. So.
Do you want to have him come up?
Sure, I mean.
Up to you.
Yeah, whatever.
Why don't you guys come on up and we'll do this formally, if that's okay? No, you'd rather not? We just have a, a resolution for you, that's fine.
I can just read it and then we can give it to you.
Hey, after this many years of service, you deserve it.
Okay. The. We can, we can read it first and then hand it to him after if you want.
Thank you.
Resolution by the Board of Commissioners honoring Alan Fox upon his retirement from Trumbull County nine-one-one Center. Happy retirement.
Thank you.
Whereas it is with great pleasure that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners joins others in honoring Alan Fox upon his retire. Whereas Alan Fox, nine one one dispatcher will be retired. After thirty years of serving the needs of the residents of Trumbull County. And whereas Alan also worked at Action Ambulance. Or Can Ambulance. Dispatcher, EMT, and the paramedic. Alan also volunteered at Helen Fire for thirteen years and nineteen years. For Meca Fire as a firefighter and a paramedic. Alan and his wife Annette have six children and three grandchildren. Alan would like to thank all his coworkers. For all the support throughout the years. Enjoyed serving the citizens in this. And therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners honors Alan for his outstanding contribution and dedicated. Especially his devotion to the Trumbull. And therefore be it resolved further that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners hereby congratulates Alan upon his retirement and sincerely wishes him. Many years of happiness, good health and relaxation for which he is most deserving. We hope that his well-deserved retirement will be as rewarding as his many years of public service. Our sincerest thanks and best wishes. Alan will be missed by everyone. Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, Denny Malloy, Mario Cantal Mesa.
Let let I want to say a few words here first. Go ahead.
Yes, I was gonna done without my family and uh. This nine one one is fantastic and they're still doing the.
There um, anything that you want to?
Uh, I think we discussed a lot at at the workshop yesterday. Uh, it's always very informative for those that listen in. You know, a lot of the stuff that we vote on today is obviously gone over with department heads and uh elected officials at our workshop. So. Uh, if you can tune into that because this is more of a. You know, vote and uh uh we should be voting and moving on uh for the most part. So uh, thank you for bearing with us today.
Oh, and then I I want to say that the problem though is that we don't get the thing. We don't get our agendas until um. It's been the Monday before the meeting, which is better than the Tuesday. Um, so we get our agendas late. We don't have all the information that we need. It's routine. We routinely, we have things on our agenda that don't have um. The the information that's supposed to be included be before it's uploaded into the agenda. So that's makes it di- difficult and I would like to have that happen. And hopefully, we can move towards a process where um we have. A week before we have our regular meeting so that we have that time to go over the agenda. And review everything that we need because it's so rush rush and it seems often like it's just a. Rubber stamp because we they they have their meeting the day before. Um.
Also, Commissioner, if you if I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, there's another thing. Um. The yesterday Ro- Rosetta was here um with action and um. I know Denny said he wanted to direct when the ribbon cutting was going to be and to have it here at the Trumbull County. Administration Building so that the department heads could be there. That is a. Community service and I believe that we need to leave it into the hands of her instead of trying to like bully. Them into wh- when they're going to have the ridding ribbon cutting. That is a grocery store with vouchers available to the public. I think that it should not be the ribbon cutting right here outside downtown. I think it needs to be. She we need to leave it to her to see if there's a better place so that she can reach uh the people who are going to be most at need for using that. And we can go to there instead of making that happen. At our at our workshop right here in downtown. I think it's better. I understand that it's easier for him and it's easier for PR. To to have it in downtown, but the purpose of having that is to make sure that people get to shop where there are food deserts and there aren't available groceries. And I think that we need to let her decide where the appropriate place is and it should be somewhere in the community. And I would like to reach out to her and let her decide if if you agree with that. Do you agree with that sentiment?
I mean, it wa- it was brought up and she eagerly said yes that she wanted to be here to do it, so I.
She said yes because he said we should do that. And a lot of people just go along with what he says. And I know that um. I've been to their their other groundbreakings and other ceremonies over on Niles Road and they might have a place that that's more appropriate to meeting the needs of the people. Or a senior center or something like that. I think that would just be more appropriate and and giving her that ability to change that because.
Yeah, I have no problem whichever way they want to do it.
Well, I'm I'm gonna ask her that then. Okay. And does anyone have any?
I really quickly, sorry. Um. In uh um. Lead up before the meeting, I forgot. We we lost a uh. A a great trustee and an even better person in uh Buzz Governor, uh Meca Township trustee, long longtime Meca Township trustee. Um, I know Darryl Black's here as well, uh Meca Township resident. He was uh involved in so much. And and that governor name goes back a long ways in in Meca Township and just uh remembering him. Um, we've lost two now quite. Quite suddenly. Um. Uh, William Templeton and now Buzz Governor. So uh two staples in our community that uh our heart goes out to his family, so.
Um, does anyone have? A desire to make a public comment? Yes, ma'am.
I. Go up to the microphone, state your name, where you're from.
Do you have the timer? Because I want to be specific into the two minutes. For every single person. Equally. Got it?
Batteries down.
I've been on the Cape and I'm back. Cape Cod is where I reside and now I'm moving to Pittsburgh. I'm the black lady that pick up the paper.
You need your name and where you're from.
My name is Keetsam Moore Brown. Cape Cod, Massachusetts. I'm now getting ready to move to Pittsburgh and practicing embalming. That being stated, I'm the black female that pick up the paper on Highland and West Market. Down at the intersection of what used to be the Remnant Room. And across in that vicinity. That being stated, I was told that the land bank here on Mahoney. Gave a female on Highland Avenue. A lease for property. That was once my uncle's who's now deceased. Now that used to be a field and I cleaned it. And I cleaned the field that's next to Mary Jo Moore as well. Now, the field that the little parcel of land that they gave this female, I do not appreciate it. I got up this morning to direct it. Because she doesn't clean up anything. I spoke to a young lady on the phone yesterday by the name of Lisa. And she said Matt was her boss. And I think before anybody allocate anything to anyone, they need to go see what they're doing. I pick up the paper because my mother resides on Highland Avenue. I don't appreciate it when someone feel that they could just tell somebody they could do something, not knowing the conditions of how they live or what they do. I cut her grass. And then you gonna give her some more grass for me to cut that I've been cutting because she don't even do that. I would like for the board, after I calm myself. I would like for the board to speak with Matt, speak with Lisa. And the next time they allocate somebody something, make sure they blind their home and there's no mice doing Tom and Jerry around the house. Because I clean that as well. And anything I say once as a woman, I can say twice. And that's why I'm here to get this frustration off of me. I will continue to clean and cut on Highland Avenue. But when you tell somebody they can have some land and they don't take care of their own land, I have an issue. So protocol and procedure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, that's been exactly two minutes and I want to respond by saying uh the land bank has meetings that are public meetings. And you are welcome to go to one of their meetings or Tuesdays, I believe, once a month at one o'clock right over behind you in this room. So if you want to come to those meetings and express your concerns. And the other thing I want to say is property maintenance is um. Uh, often a problem in the city and you're and we're the commissioners, so that's totally outside of our purview. But if you want to call the um. The. Uh, down probably Tony Angelo is there. The it's the um Health Department, the Health Department in downtown Warren. It's two five eight East Market Street, the Social Security Building. And so if you want to go and talk to them and give a description, you know, if you want to take a picture, go talk to them or call them, they'll go out there and if they see it necessary to make a citation, they'll do that, the Health Department will. So I just want to let you know. Okay?
Thank you. We got somebody coming up and then you, Darrell.
Someone's behind you.
Lynn and Terry Shavers from Braceville Community Program. So I'm gonna talk real fast so I can make my two minutes. But anyway, um, I want to thank the Commissioners, the Trumbull County Senior Levy Board. Um, we do a super seniors program in Braceville and uh we're having about twenty people attend. And we're we're aligning our things with the OAA goals and it's going really well. We want to say thank you.
Awesome.
Also, our um Braceville. Braceville African American Heritage Museum. We hope to have a grand opening September twentieth. We call it the B-A-A-H-M. And uh we're inviting you all to come and we hope that everyone will come and join us.
When is it?
September twentieth.
That's a tentative date or is that?
Well. Yes.
That's a tentative date.
Okay.
So do we only get two minutes?
Oh, if he'll. It's a. Yeah, you each get two minutes.
One more, okay. Well, um, I'll probably cry during this, but. On January seventh. I lost my uncle and my son in a house fire. And I just wanted to thank. Fire departments. Came out. Want to thank the Ward Township Fire Department. The Newton Falls Joint Fire District. The Lordstown Fire Department. Weathersfield Fire Department. Champion Fire Department. Because. When they got there. The house was fully engulfed. But. I couldn't even read the fire marshal report at first. But now that I have, I really want to thank. All firefighters and the volunteer firefighters and Mr. Fox. Thank you for your service. Because. I realize. These people. They esteem someone else's life even more so than theirs. This was about three fifty eight AM when I got the call. And they were there, but they get out of their beds. Their family lets them go. And they go and. They do they. Greater love has no man than this and they lay down their lives for another. They put themselves in danger. To help someone else. They don't. They don't. They're almost like people in the military. They're not suckers. They're not losers. They're people of honor, integrity and valor. And I just want to thank those fire departments that came out. Thank Chief Joseph Natali. The Ohio Edison Group came out, Dominion Gas. Warren City Water Department. Warren Township Road Department. They came. And found the bodies the next morning. They were there early. Very respectfully to show. And the Ohio State Fire Marshal Office in the corner. And I spoke to Dr. Di Amico. He answered all my questions. But I just want to. With a very grateful heart. Say thank you.
I just want to give you an update on the museum. I think that this is her idea of holding my feet to the fire to make sure we get the project completed in time. To say that when we have this deadline is the twentieth, so it is a tentative date. Um, we um did a well this past Friday. Um, we didn't have water at the property. And so uh now we have we have a well, the uh HVAC is going in. So I think we're gonna spend all of the funding. Uh, I don't think there's gonna be any funding left, so just give you a little bit of an update. So I think we are gonna be ready though on the twentieth. So I'm sorry to follow up behind her with the an update. All right, thank you.
Could I add something on this?
No, no. No. These are, this is public comments to address the board. Side conversations can happen afterwards.
My name is Darryl Black. I live in Meca Township. I've lived there all my life. Um, I want to go on to three different subjects. Uh, we're working on the natural gas still in Meca West. We're having some struggle because. East Ohio has sold out. Dominion has sold out to a company in Canada and. Trying to find who's kind of in charge in new development of pipeline up and down these other roads is a little bit difficult, but we are still trying to find a point of. Contact person to work on that. We've not given up and we have a few other township, Green being one of them, that would also like to extend. And piggyback with us in getting natural gas to them communities too. Um, on the natural or on the. Uh, internet service, I kind of like an update from the Commissioners. I've read in the paper where. You've caught the Commissioners have contacted someone for the rural ten townships up north, one of which I live in, to see where you're at. With that, because I have a company that is basically used net that wants to come in. I've been in contact with them. And they want to come in and start selling the dish. Uh, type systems for the individual homes and businesses. And they also have a uh system that works for somebody that already has. Internet as a backup. Like if the power would go off, you could still operate through them, but you could use your main provider with them as a backup. But. I have that. Basically in the works, but I don't want to interfere and step on the toes of Trumbull County. I don't know. Where your system is at, if it's one year away, one month away. I don't, I don't know.
So currently, our planning commission has a request for proposals out for um providers.
Isn't it R? I believe it's an RFI or do they?
Uh, request for information. I'm sorry. Request for information.
Okay.
And and uh, that's one of the, our main goals. It says, is that northern tier. Um, obviously, running fiber lines out there is gonna be a challenge and maybe insurmountable, but but hours are something that we can uh definitely look at. Um, Ashdabula County and and mirroring what they're doing out there is something that I'd like to try to do in in rural northern Trumbull County. So, uh, that's the goal. We've set aside ARPA money to do that. Uh, that can act as seed money for other federal dollars, too. And um, you know, the fiber backbone line down Route eleven is still very much um very much a a thing that we're pursuing along with Mahoning and Ashdabula uh counties. So that's gonna be the lake to river sort of broadband fiber line. And um, we we've made a concerted effort, this board has, to to prioritize broadband and to make sure that that is the utility of the future. Uh, it's, it's, we've, we've learned from COVID that that schools and remote work, so many people are dependent on digital access and affordable digital access. So, we're trying to do that and um and put our money where our mouth is, so.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't know where he was at as far as the timeframe and I didn't want to step on toes by going in this direction.
I see, okay. So, are are you wrapping up your comments here?
Yes, I'm wrapping it up. And I'm gonna request a letter from the Board of Commissioners, possible recognition or uh recommendation for me to replace Buzz Governor as a Meca Township trustee. Cause I've worked on the natural gas and several other projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Darrell.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, I just wanted to add, um, because uh we talked about the ARPA money, just to let you know exactly where that is. You have that on Attorney Rogers' desk right now to be reviewed.
Yes.
For eligibility. So, that's the one point five million through East Gate to serve. And I I kind of think that when he said ten townships, that specifically has the ten townships within it. Thank you.
Thank you. Shouldn't be an issue, especially with the ARPA guidelines. Broadband was one of the things at the forefront of those, so um, along with sewer and water projects, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond um also, that is one of the most difficult jobs for um being a firefighter. And um, being a dispatcher and dealing with those calls. And and I can speak from experience that that's a horrible thing to go through and I'm sorry.
There really are no words. I, it's um, uh, unfathomable to me to 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 lose a child and to and to have something like that happen. My heart goes out to you, as does the entire board.
My first meeting, my first meeting as a commissioner here, um, I lost my sister and nephew the day before. It was so like I'm sorry, it's hard.
Thank you both.
Is there anything, uh, is there any other comments?
No, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.